Yeah, you know. Yeah, you know. Yeah. I have a card because when y'all were taking the questions, I forgot my card. Well, it's. I already got that. I forgot. I'm good. Oh, ho, ho. You're having a hard time. I'm glad. 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 I'm probably a little. No. I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm glad. We'd like to begin now, if you don't mind taking your seat. This is an annual event now for the League of Women Voters. We firmly believe that people need first to vote. It's not just a privilege, it's a responsibility. And we believe that you need information to do that. One of the ways to get information is directly from the candidates themselves. Not what somebody told you, but what you heard them say. So we feel very strongly about putting on these forums so that you have an opportunity to come out and hear them. Now, as for the rules of how we will conduct this, you will have two minutes for opening statements. You'll usually have a minute and a half to answer a question, but bear in mind, if there's a long, humbling question, I might give you two minutes. And we have a timekeeper. She will hold up a yellow card. You have 30 seconds. Red card, stop talking. If you're planning to be on the school board, I presume you have vision, you have yellow bit, and you see it, please stop. In fairness to the other candidates, and in order to keep order, you'll just stop talking. And then at the end, you'll have a minute for closing statements. And of course, if there's a question that you meant to say something, you just forgot, or just you think about, you can add that into your closing statement. We don't determine what that should be. You can just talk about whatever you want to. We have the campaign signs and what have you are just outside the door, so if any of you want to pick up any of that, you can get it at the end of the forum. We ask you to silence your cell phones, please. Nobody's going to die while you're in here. You're not allowed. With that, I think we are ready to begin. We have lots of questions. So I hope you'll find out which one you want to know about these four people. Are you lined up before we actually go? Okay. Are you the first one to speak?
Lenny, are you going to give them time for opening statements?
Yes, yes. All right. And we are seated in the manner in which they were listed on the school board site, so we didn't take any favors or anything. We just listed them just as they did, because I don't know whether it was following order or whatever, but we followed suit. So we will begin our opening statements. Ms. Wright, who is running for District Three.
Hi, I'm Tanya Wright. I'm running for Denton ISD School Board Place Three. First, I've been in the district for about six years with my husband and three kids. I'm out in the Bradwell Zone. I have kids at every campus level, Union Park, Nazo, and Bradwell. I have a master's degree in child development with multiple teaching degrees. Professionally, I went a little bit different direction. I'm a VP of Operations for a mortgage company where I focus on process optimization, building to scale, and hypergrowth. I haven't strayed too far from my passion in education. I've served on various PTA boards for the last eight years, as well as almost every district committee there is. I've served on the Bond Committee, Legislative Watch Committee, the 1925 Committee, Student Health Advisory Committee, and Campus Leadership Team, just to name a few. I've advocated for all students at every level, from lighted crosswalks with our city to SRO officers, all the way up to advocating at the state and national level with our legislators. We are at a time where education's underattacked, we're underfunded, provided more partially in unfunded mandates, and we need somebody strong that can help us navigate these trying times. My top three priorities would be funding, of course. We're going to be navigating a funding deficit where we have to balance the budget without losing high-quality education. Teacher retention, providing the support, money they need to be successful. Sorry, do I need to get closer? And then, third priority is safety and security from external intruders, as well as peer-to-peer within the classroom. Our teachers and students deserve to feel safe when they come to school every day. Thank you. I'm running for Denton ISD School Board Place Three.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Julie Greenawalt, and I'm running for trustee for Denton ISD Place Three as well. I come to you from Pennsylvania. I've been a resident here for about a year and a half. I've been listening to many of the parents say their concerns and such, and I feel that I have a unique skill set, able to help address some of the issues that we're facing. First and foremost, I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse for a very long time, probably over 40 years, as a maternity nurse, and so I'm used to working with the vulnerable population, both moms and babies, and I've always been a voice for the vulnerable. I'm also a veteran. I served in the United States Air Force. I was a captain during Desert Storm. I was a flight nurse during that timeframe, and so I know not only leadership skills, but followership skills, and both are important when you're trying to gain consensus. And we're in a very struggling time, and consensus is going to be one of the things that we're going to need to come to agreement on. I've also been an educator for quite some time. Over 30 years I've been an educator, primarily at the university level. I was a nurse educator where I taught nursing students, and we taught through COVID, knowing that we could not stop the supply chain, and nurses were very, very important, and so we kept working through that. So I feel the pain of folks as we go through education. I believe that I have a lot of, like I said, skill sets, but I believe that academic performance is an issue, our budget is an issue, and collaboration between the school district and parents could be an issue that I think we need to address. And so I'm Julie Greenawalt, running for trustee Denton ISD Place Three. Thank you.
My name is Charles Stafford. I serve on the board currently, and it's a true pleasure to be here and to serve the community in the capacity that I have for the last 27 years. In 1988, I got interested in board service because I had kids in school, and I wanted to make a difference. Adopting four kids changed my life in so many ways. My parents set an example of service to church, community, and country that has stayed with me my whole life. A few of the organizations to which I belong or have belonged are Kiwanis, High Noon Lions, Texas Association of School Boards, 14 years, including as president. Denton ISD, 27 years. Communities and Schools of North Texas, 15 years. It's a dropout prevention program. Its goal uses volunteers. Founding Board President of the Denton, I mean, of the Children's Advocacy Center of North Texas. I was also the founding board president of the Denton Education Foundation. I also serve on the Appraisal District Board. I've served on various realtor associations, and my wife and I co-chaired the capital campaign for the College of Public Affairs and Community Service at UNT. Experience matters. Now more than ever in DISD, we are dealing with unprecedented enrollment and municipal growth. And for the last five years, we've been forced to stretch declining revenues from the state of Texas to cover more kids. This impacts the overall quality of our programs. Neighborhood districts are increasing class sizes and are implementing more drastic strategies like closing schools. Fortunately, we haven't had to do that because we've been very careful and frugal with our resources up to this point, but the day is coming.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for inviting me here today. My name is Dr. Felicia Anderson, and I'm honored to stand before you as a candidate for the Denton ISD School Board. I'm originally from Kansas City, Missouri slash Kansas, no state line, and came to Denton in 2005 to attend college at the University of North Texas. There, I met my husband, and we've lived in Denton County for 20 years, with 16 of those being in Denton ISD. Together, we have four children who attend schools at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. I earned my doctoral degree in literacy, language, and culture from Texas Woman's University and have been a literacy educator for more than 13 years. During this time, I've spent my career advocating for, to ensure that every child has access to the skills they need in order to thrive as informed citizens, and I have also met with state representatives to advocate for teacher growth and retention. As well, I have served on several committees within the district, including the Campus Improvement Committee, as well as the Denton Educational Improvement Council. So it'll be my honor just to continue my further service to this community as a member of the school board. If elected, I will focus on three key areas. I will focus on restoring trust in educators, working to ensure every child has access to the opportunities to learn in a safe and secure environment, and I will work to strengthen partnerships across the district and the community. Throughout my entire career, I have collaborated in order to help students, and I will bring the same mindset to the board and work with the other trustees in order to make decisions that are focused on what's best for the future of this community. Again, I'm Dr. Felicia Anderson, and I'm running for Denton ISD trustee Place Five.
Thank you. And now, again, our question. As we'll alternate, if you answer first, so that we give everybody an equal opportunity. And we'll go ahead and start with Mrs. Wright, and then we'll do alternations. Lenny, could you speak into the microphone? It's hard to hear you.
Turn it on. Well, I would like to know what you see as the three most pressing issues facing public schools in Texas and in Denton in particular?
First, funding. TEA did a study back in 2018 and determined the needed amount of funding to run a school properly. That was 6160, and we have not seen an increase since 2019, and we have had record levels of inflation. With no increase, we've had to, we have a $20 million deficit budget that was passed in Denton ISD. Denton ISD is currently looking at the ways to reduce that deficit. Every one of them is painful. They all hurt, they all have a cost that I would not like to see. Navigating those waters is going to be huge. The next one that I would say is teacher retention. Teachers have to feel valued. They have to be safe when they come to school. They have to be able to teach in their classrooms, so behavior and what we do, what the district is allowed to do, is our hands are tied a little bit in some of the behavior aspects. And then, sorry, I was trying to pay attention to the time. And then safety, making sure that kids and students and teachers feel safe coming to school every day, so that would be my third. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Greenawalt.
Could you repeat the question, please?
What do you see as the three most pressing issues facing public schools in Texas and in Denton in particular?
There are lots of stressors that are being put on public education. One of the ones that came out most recently is the growth that is occurring that's bringing in all of the out-of-staters, are bringing in children that have an education level beyond what Texas has. And so it's creating great competition for jobs when the kids graduate. So that's one of the stressors that's facing us. Another, of course, is budget. Budget has to do not only with a monetary disbursement to us, but also monetary use and the wise use of funding that we have. So finances are another stressor. And then I believe the third most pressing issue facing Denton ISD is teacher retention. We have a problem with what we perceive as academic performance and outcomes, and we have to retain good teachers and employ good teachers and certified teachers, and that presents an issue with all the cultural issues that we're facing. So those are the three stressors that I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stafford.
Thank you. I'd pick funding, safety, and managing growth. The legislature's passing a budget tomorrow, most likely, and we'll have a good idea as to whether they're going to be vouchers or not. Hopefully, before the session's over with, they're going to do the right thing. The governor told us a couple of years ago that we weren't getting any more money until he got his vouchers, and he's about a day and a vote away from getting that. So hopefully, we will be able to get a little bit better treatment from the state of Texas because the treatment's been awful. Safety, we've had a lot of problems from the state. I mean, everybody knows about these horrible events. The state did quickly responded and passed laws mandating that we have armed people on campuses. Unfortunately, they sent $15,000 to us per campus to pay for the guard. Check and see what starting police officers get paid. Nobody was applying for the job. They've got to come through with more money to be safe. Most important thing, at least, one of the big things in my mind is managing the growth. We've done a really good job of it. We know, we have demographers, we know where we're growing, and I'm done.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. I would say our top three issues are, again, restoring trust in educators, creating safe and secure environments for our students and teachers, as well as the budget, as everyone else has mentioned. And so as far as restoring trust in educators, anytime legislation is passed, it's the educators who have to implement it, from the budget to school discipline, to curriculum, and so forth and so on. And so we have to trust our educators to do the jobs that they were trained to do. Our educators have gone to school to get the education that they need in order to educate the students. And so making sure the public understands how much work goes into becoming an educator and then trusting that they've been put in the position to do the job that's best for the students is something that I think we could do a little bit better of as just a state, honestly, as a country, when it comes to teachers. Secondly, with securing our schools, I would work to create a discipline flow chart so that it can be a little bit more transparent for teachers and students in regards to if there is an issue. We all know exactly how to handle it. I believe it's held, there is that type of system with administrators, but I would work to bring that down to the teacher and parent level as well. And then finally, with the budget, I would work to, as been done, look at places where we can definitely save.
Thank you. This round will begin with Mrs. Greenawalt, and the question is, libraries are often at the center of debates around book bans and censorship. What is your philosophy on maintaining access to a wide range of books and educational materials in Denton ISD libraries? And how would you approach challenges to that access?
So I believe that the library is there to support the teachers and to support the curriculum, and knowing that we have deficits in our academic outcomes, we need to be able to have books and resources that the teachers feel and the parents feel are appropriate for the child's learning capacity. And so we have to do whatever it takes to bring up the academic outcomes that we're seeing from our children, not only DISD-wide, but Texas-wide, so that our children are competitive for jobs when they are looking for careers and endpoints. So I believe that the books are needed to be able to support the educational mission of increasing those outcomes and performances for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Stafford.
Well, we have professional librarians who are well-trained and do a good job. Our controversy of the last, of the recent past has been about books, about certain kinds of books in the libraries. It's been a lot of misinformation. We've had people in this room naming off titles of photography that didn't exist in our, in our schools, but people were saying they did. It was a lot, a big case of people claiming that there was a bigger problem than there was. We have a policy that anybody can have a book pulled and reviewed, and if it isn't up to our community standard, it is removed. If it is, it's returned to the shelf. Our librarians and our, we have parent-teacher committees that read these books together. I'm really proud of the way they've handled it. It's slow, it's taken a lot of time, but we've done, just put it this way, a parent has every right in the world to say, I don't want my kid to see this book, but they don't have the right to say, your kid can't see it either. That's a, that's a community standard, and that is something that's worked out by all the people in the room at the, when they do their reviews. And it's, it's imperfect, but it's pretty darn good. So I'm proud of the work they've done. It would come through pretty stabilizing.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson.
So as Mr. Stafford has stated, librarians are the ones who have gone to school. They are the ones who have taken the courses needed in order to know how to select the best books that are age-appropriate for the different grade levels that they service. And so I would definitely put that trust in the hands of librarians. Again, librarians are educators, so making sure you're restoring that trust in educators to do exactly what they have gone to school to do. And making sure that when they do select the books, if there is an issue, Denton ISD has a policy, even if the teacher does recommend it on the list, then as a teacher, I can say, hey, if your child doesn't want to read this, or if the child comes to me and says, I don't want to read this, they are more than welcome to pick another book to read, and the activities work exactly the same with whatever book they choose, as long as it's within the same genre of what we're reading. And so I would definitely say to make sure that we're trusting our librarians to do the jobs that they were paid to do, and as parents, have a conversation with your children. If the book comes home that you don't like, sit down and say, hey, this doesn't really align with our values. It may align with someone else's, but in this house, we don't, we don't do those things or we don't read those things, and so let's go, let's go back and pick a different book.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Wright.
Hi, I support our librarians. Libraries are really the heart and soul of many of our schools. As a parent, I have never had a concern with any book that my children have brought home. I served on a couple book review committees where I read books and opined on the subject of the books. I think that our books need to be diverse, just like our population is diverse. And then I would like to point out that our librarians don't just support our teachers, they are teachers of their own right. They, we actually have state-required teaks that when your elementary student goes to library for specials, they're not just checking out books, they're actually learning. Their state-required curriculum that those librarians are teaching, and teaching them about books, how to select books, how to select make-ready books, what the Dewey Decimal System is like, many, many different topics that they're learning in those libraries, especially at the elementary level. I support our policy around challenging a book, appealing a decision, and then as a parent, their right to not allow their student to check out said book. Thank you.
We will begin this time with Mr. Stafford. cite evidence of how Denton ISD students are college, career, or military-ready. What programs, what programs does the district have to prepare students for future success?
Ready?
Yes, Mr. Stafford.
It's a good question. We have quite a few excellent academic examples of this. We have the International Baccalaureate Program where kids are, it's a different way of learning, it's more expensive, but it's so, so powerful. Kids, kids do their own research projects. Last year, we had 24 valedictorians at Denton High School, kids with perfect GPAs because of, they were all IB students. These kids, you give them, it's amazing what they, I've seen four-year-olds writing research papers. I love this stuff. And we pioneered it. It was actually something I brought back to a conference 15 or 20 years ago. We pioneered it because it was, we had a school that was basically really, really high poverty, and we, the idea was to uplift everything, raise the level of curriculum, and it really works well. We have a high school that is vocational-oriented. There are about 40 very high-quality occupations that the kids can go out there and take. It's like going to work. It's, it's amazing. There's no noise in the halls, just passing periods. They're working. And now they've got, they can stay there all day. They can get all their core courses there, too. Those kids are easily going to be highly employable without a bunch of debt, right out of high school.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson.
So Mr. Stafford mentioned the IB program. He also talks about the vocational school, but then our other schools as well do career pathways. And so even if you don't choose to go to La Grone Academy, for example, to follow that like firefighter pathway, then there are still pathways for our students to follow at the Bradwell campus, at Ryan High School, within those zones. And so what I would like to see strengthened in this district is aligning K through 12 all the way with that career pathway and not, you know, marrying the kids to their pathway, but at least, at least allowing them to explore a little bit more the different pathways that they could go into once they reach that high school level, so that they have more of an idea of where they want to go after school. But ACT, SAT scores are doing great, and they are currently in alignment with the state of Texas and above the state of Texas. And so continuing to strengthen those programs and making sure... And so continuing to strengthen those programs and making sure we continue to build into those teachers and keep the teachers who teach those programs in the classroom so that they can do the work that they do best, strengthening the future of Denton ISD as well as the future of our citizens.
Thank you. Ms. Wright?
I think that Felicia and Charles have mentioned some, several great programs that we have. A couple others, he mentioned IB program. We also have dual credit in the non-IB classrooms where students can, and AP, but students can get those, those college credit courses at a fraction of the college prices while they're in high school. We also have an alternative school that, what hasn't been mentioned, which is Fred Moore, which is an alternative learning school to provide, maybe the traditional high school doesn't work. The traditional classrooms, maybe they need some element of self-paced, something else isn't working. It's another choice for them. And then one program that my students, or one of my children love is the Teach Denton program, which does start in the elementary schools and goes all the way up to high school that can provide some teaching inspirations. And then we love to hire our own, so that we, we hire many Teach Denton students. Just a couple of numbers. The taper, the Texas Academic Progress Report that came out in November, which is 2023 numbers, over 75% of our students graduated with CCMRs, which is College Career Military Readiness. Over 85% of them graduated with endorsements, which is huge. Our nine-to-12 dropout rate is 0.5%. State average is 2%. So we are well under the state average. I love all the things that we can do in high schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Greenawalt?
Thank you. So many of the programs have already been, been mentioned, and I think we're actually a diamond shining in the state of Texas with the programs that we have. Charles mentioned the IB program, the designer programs that Felicia meant, the CCMR programs that Tanya has mentioned. We're doing really well in, in the vocational and technical arenas. What we need to strengthen on is the college preparedness. We are giving the PSATs to the students regularly, to all of the high school students. Last year, we only saw 421 students taking the SAT here and going on for college, is what the statistics were showing. So I'd like to see that fortified as well. And I think building upon the, the dual-degree program where we have partnered with the schools and the local universities and community colleges, I think is an area for us to build upon. And I think that DISD has the capability to do that with the foundational other programs that they have so they have the expertise and the model already there that's built. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next question, we will begin with Ms. Anderson. Denton ISD is operating on a deficit budget, and the state legislature appears to be on track to pass school vouchers. Even with more funding in the basic allotment, school leaders across the state are bracing for more budget deficits. If elected, what factors would cause you to vote in favor of closing campuses and consolidating schools?
So factors to close campuses. I don't know if any factor would get me to vote in that manner because I believe our campuses are needed. If anything, I would vote to not open any more schools. However, our district is currently growing because of all the influx that we're seeing, and so both are needed. Therefore, I would offer an alternative viewpoint and advocate for a four-day school week. That way, we can save a little bit of money while also still looking at strengthening the schools that we currently have open and not have to pull back on any of those. I believe when schools close, that means teacher class sizes increase. That does not help literacy rates. That does not help, help student achievement at all. When schools close, then disruptive behavior increases. Again, these things do not help literacy, and it does not help student achievement. It also leads to teacher burnout, and therefore will increase the teacher retention rate that we're struggling to maintain. Therefore, we need a whole different approach. We need a new way of looking at this situation. I know we've done every line item, and teacher pay, of course, is the biggest amount because there are 5,000 teachers in the district, so of course it would be the biggest amount. But cutting teachers means you cut student achievement. Therefore, we need a whole new approach. And looking at it from a four-day school week, I think it's possible.
Thank you. Ms. Wright?
I would not hope we get to the point of closing schools. It, it could definitely be in our horizon if we don't receive additional funding from the state. We, our teacher, like Felicia said, our teacher budget, our teacher salary is about 72.5% of our total budget. So unfortunately, that's the biggest lever to pull. I, I served on the 1925 Committee where we looked at the budget and what the, we would, we will be making recommendations in May, hopefully after hearing that we have additional funding from Austin, on the, the next steps. I, the, the next items with the biggest budget impact are, unfortunately, class sizes and planning periods. Those are the two biggest ways to move the needle quickly. Not that I necessarily support either of those because, like Dr. Anderson said, they, they do have impacts to our learning that happen every day. Whether you cut the class sizes or cut a school, cutting a school, just by opening a school, you have a nurse, AP, principal, a counselor, just, just opening a school, you have overhead before you even put a teacher in there. So it, I'm not saying I would necessarily vote for it right away, but it is a needle we could move. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Greenawalt?
So I, I said earlier that one of the strongest things that I support is increasing academic performance and student outcomes. I believe that that is what needs to be the driving force for the budget that we have. The budget that we have right now, we've been looking at with a perspective on deficit funding, and we have $116 million in the bank, if you will, in the savings. And so I think what we have to do is use some of our savings. We can't use all of it. We have to be prudent and, and leave $40,000 in there, which is, you know, roughly our quarter of our, our operating budget, which is $322 million. And so what we have to do is restructure our thought processes, invest in our children, and manage our growth. And so I think that what we need to do is look at the way the model is constructed right now and see if we can move the needle that way. I don't believe we need to close schools. I don't believe we need to, to, to cut teachers. We need to invest in our teachers. We need them to, to bring our students up, up, up the pathway. And so it's a matter of rethinking how we address our funding structure. And that's where we need to move the needle, not in pulling the plug on schools or children. That's just not healthy for us. Invest in our children, manage our growth.
Mr. Stafford?
I would suggest you take that speech to Austin and let them have it. Because the truth is, the best academic results we have is when we have smaller class sizes, more teachers, and aides, instructional aides, and instructional coaching. Those work. We know their research-proven. We don't have to rethink it. It's there. The problem is, we're 85% people. The only way you cut millions of dollars out of something the size of Denton ISD is cutting people. And it's a complex, it's not a minute-and-a-half answer, but it's a very complex thing to try to reconcile. It's probably the most expedient, prudent money management thing to do, in some cases, to close a school because you have half a million dollars in salaries that she just, that funny just ticked off a minute ago. Sometimes if you have a school that's half-full, it's probably best to consolidate. You can have this conversation with the superintendent in Lewisville, who's just shut down six. And it's, believe me, they didn't want to do that. They did not want to do that.